Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem. Mr. President.
Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for today's invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, I just wanted to share with you a couple of individuals in our community who passed away recently, who played a major role in our community, albeit some years ago, with a gentleman by the name of A.B. August B. Hogan, or Buddy Hogan, as a lot of people used to remember him by. Buddy was formerly president of the Omaha branch of the NAACP. He was very active in our community in turning. He was very strong in terms of diversity and inclusion. He was very strong in terms of fairness in working with police. He's a gentleman that a lot of people in this community who remember him are going to miss him. Another gentleman was Herb Rhodes, who was in the cattle business for many, many years, and had his little office down in the Jewel Building, but did a lot of work and was very helpful in helping people gain employment, helping people be involved in work, and was always a consummate advocate for the North Omaha community. And both of those gentlemen in the community are going to be missed, and if I could have a moment of silence for both of them and their families, I would appreciate it.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, I would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Next on the agenda is the proclamation.
Oh, proclamation. Oh, that's right. We have a proclamation to be read up today, and I believe Councilmember Festerson has the honors of doing that, so Councilmember Festerson, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. President. I think I'll have a few formal-
Let me remind everybody, too, Pete is the head of the planning, the chairman of the planning committee for the city council with, who are the members? Breaker, there's gotta be one more, and he won't raise his hand, but Mr. Pauls is the other one. Mr. Festerson, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. President. As chairman of that committee, I'll have a few, a formal proclamation to read on behalf of Jay Davis, but then maybe a couple informal comments to make, too, and I'm sure others will have some as well, given his long and distinguished career here on behalf of the city and on behalf of taxpayers. So I'll start by saying this, and Jay, if you would, come down and, and your wife, too, looks like Deb's here as well. We'll come down and embarrass you sufficiently.
I want my time.
Have the podium's fine, and then we'll be a chance to smirble, but if you want, or any comments you might want to make of your distinguished career, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
So the proclamation reads like this. Whereas Jay Davis was born in Butler, Pennsylvania, spending his youth in Pennsylvania and Ohio before joining the United States Air Force, where he served his country with distinction; and whereas while stationed at Warren Air Force Base in Cheyenne, Jay achieved his most important accomplishment, meeting and marrying Deb, his wife of 39 years; and whereas Jay developed his building and code expertise, performing several roles in the construction and sign businesses, eventually moving to Omaha in 1992 to work for a local architectural firm; and whereas Jay took a position with the City of Omaha in 1997 as a building inspector, advancing to chief building inspector in 2000, and superintendent of permits and inspections, and assistant planning director in 2011; and whereas, under Jay's leadership, his division modernized processes for submitting plans, property maintenance code enforcement, and demolitions, in addition to providing day-to-day oversight of staff responsible for performing more than 75,000 inspections, and issuing more than 38,000 permits each year; and whereas Jay oversaw development and implementation of several key ordinances focused on building and public safety, including a registry for abandoned and vacant properties, boarding house regulations, licensing for building and HVAC contractors, and an overhaul of sign regulations, as well as being a key consultant on many other legislative and policy initiatives; and whereas, as a devoted husband, father, and grandfather, Jay is retiring to focus on spending quality time with Deb, his children, and three grandchildren, as well as reconnect with his passions, photography, camping, and fishing. Now, therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Omaha recognizes Jay Davis for his exceptional service to the city, congratulates him on his retirement, and declares Tuesday, June 26, 2018, as Jay Davis Day in the City of Omaha. Congratulations.
Thank you.
There's some other comments before you get a chance to speak.
You know I don't want to do this here, because I'm not sure how I'm gonna fall apart.
Okay, go ahead.
And I'll finish mine, Jay, just by saying that in addition to all that I just read and that's memorialized in your proclamation we'll give you here in a minute, I wanted to say that I think it does take a special personality to do what you did and did so well for so many years here in the City of Omaha, working on some really tough issues, such as the public health and welfare of our citizens, building codes, abandoned properties, demolition properties. Those are very difficult issues to deal with, and lots of different personalities involved in all those cases, so we really appreciate all you've done for the city and for the taxpayers and for the city council as well, and I wish you well and your other loves as well, and appreciate your interest in music and photography and family, and I know you'll have a great time doing that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Jay, the proclamation named a number of your achievements and the legacy that you leave here with the city, and at the core of what you did, as I saw it during my time here, was your passion for public safety, and taking what had been tragic events in the city and turning them into productive, positive changes in law to ensure that the things that had happened wouldn't happen again, or were extremely less likely to occur. The tragic boarding house fire in South Omaha, where we had, you know, credible loss of life to the public safety officials, like firefighters who were getting injured in abandoned houses throughout our city. That sticks out foremost in my mind, and how you took that to heart and developed code to address those serious life safety issues in our city. And in the meantime, with the abandoned and neglected property, to make a positive change, too, so that people would improve their properties. Another thing you did is you really tackled in a constructive way the outstanding code enforcement and demolition lists of this city, from many hundreds of demo list properties to now, the catch-up, the end of the line, so to speak, is in sight, and it appears to be manageable. But the last thing I want to say has impressed me is your calmness under pressure with the international nutrition plant collapse, and the old market fire and explosion, how you responded to those situations with utmost professionalism, calmness in the face of very serious situations. I'll take those memories with me, as I'm sure you will, and on behalf of the people of District III, I want to thank you publicly for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try to be brief, but, but we're Pennsylvania. I didn't know that you were from Pennsylvania, or you're a Scrapple fan?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Not many people-
With syrup.
I'm not a syrup.
Or butter.
We can talk later.
Yes, we can.
All right. Anyway, I've had the pleasure of knowing and working with Jay, both from the public side as well as the private side, and your level of professionalism was always appreciated. I think walking away from a conversation, I think all parties felt that they were heard and they were treated fairly, and I think that's about the best compliment someone can give, is that when both sides walk away feeling like they've benefited from that conversation, that's a positive. So thank you for your service, and I know we're gonna see a little bit of you around, and I know that your passion for photography is something that you want to continue doing as well, but thank you for all your years of service, and I think the citizens of Omaha probably don't understand or grasp the impact that you've had on the city, but we truly do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
And in addition to all of the big things that you've done, and you've contributed to the City of Omaha that were listed before, you've also, you also don't discount the little things. The people that, in my district, that had the noise problem at IV that you put a lot of time and effort into, and in fact actually went to Joyce's house and met us all there, and then actually went up, made him go up in her bedroom, so poor Jay is in the bedroom with three ladies, and I think at some point he's like, "I think we're done here, come back downstairs." But you handled that, you let people know that you cared, it wasn't an immediate fix, but you continued on, and you helped somebody with something that's not nearly as big as an Em's Pub fire. But also, you educated me. So over the last five years, whenever I had questions, and of course, planning was something I came in with virtually no knowledge about whatsoever, and I feel that I have learned so much from you over the last five years, and I think there's a lot more to learn, so hopefully you'll still be willing to answer a call every now and then from somebody that wants to know.
It's possible, yes.
But I just wanna, I just wanna thank you for all the years, and the City of Omaha, all the citizens of Omaha have benefited from you, whether they know you or don't know you, but you've also done a lot in addition to the big things in caring for little problems that people have that mean a lot to those individual small business owners. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Jay, are you a, I know you're a Nebraska fan, kind of, like I am, kind of, but are you Penn State or Ohio State?
I'm a Penn State fan, through and through.
And when Nebraska plays, yeah.
Okay, all right.
But to make it fair, Ben, I'm also a Pirates, Steelers, and Penguins fan, so therefore I cry an awful lot and drink a lot of beer.
As do us Browns fans.
I'm sorry about that, I wasn't gonna bring that up, but-
But, and being an Air Force person, thank you for your service, being involved in the military. That's always a challenge, not only for the individual that actually enlists, or however they get there, but it's also a challenge for family as well, so I wanted to thank you for your service. And I also wanted to take the opportunity to thank you specifically for the abandoned and neglected building ordinance. That is going to, that is one of the areas that I think is, in the future, as we continue to move forward, is going to very definitely bear fruit, and we're going to see a difference all over our community, and a lot of it is due to the efforts that you engaged in, in terms of helping us bring that ordinance forward and getting it passed, and we have people now who understand that we're serious about neglected and abandoned properties, and they're starting to step up. I've seen more people doing work on their homes in various parts of the community than I've seen in a long time, and I think that's due to some of the work that, the work that you have done and the passage of that ordinance by this council. So immeasurably, thank you very much for the work that you have done here, thank you for the work that you will continue to do, as I call you from time to time about a couple of things, so. But again, thank you, and a couple more lights, a couple more people want to say a few things. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, President. Jay, I've probably known you a lot less than everybody else up here, but nonetheless, I want to say thank you for all you've done. I know early on I had some questions about a few issues, and you definitely had all the answers, especially in a couple community meetings that we were actually at, and maybe one of them, you didn't even know I was a council member at that time, but they asked us a bunch of questions, and I had a few answers, and I was like, "He's got the answers right there." So I kind of felt that reassuring that you were there, you know, and whether people agree with you or not, respect is earned, not given, and you've definitely earned that respect, so thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Mr. Harding, again.
Thank you, again, Mr. President.
And finish again, too.
Just one, one quick thing. Deb, thank you for letting us gain from your husband's knowledge. I know it's, there are probably many long hours, I know that there are many meetings after normal business hours, but I want to thank you and your family for sharing him with us, and he's all yours now.
Oh, boy.
Mr. Palermo, you have one more?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If Breaker had two, then I'm gonna have to. So, and I hope it's a short meeting, otherwise I apologize. So I just wanted to ask on a different note, so I know you're into photography, and I was wondering, if we were eating lunch outside and you were on the Iowa side, do you have that lens that could really zoom in on what we're eating and bust us out, or do you have all that stuff?
I actually do, and you can't believe how much I get paid for those images.
I'll be eating more healthy now, thank you.
No problem. I'll be the last one to do that.
Mr. Palermo, you had to ask. Jay, the floor is yours.
Thank you. First of all, thank all of you. I'm deeply humbled. I didn't come here to be what everybody thinks I am. I came here to be a person, to do a job. I fell in love with Omaha in the time that I've been here. I've fallen in love with the growth that Omaha's had, but my staff is really who makes me look good. Without my staff, I'm nobody. More importantly, it's my bride of 39 years who makes me look really good. She's had those late-night calls, she's wondered when I was gonna come back home. She told me the other day, she goes, "I'm not gonna miss the police calling you at 3:00 in the morning 'cause some drunk ran through a building." I said ironically, "I'm not gonna miss that either." I'm not gonna miss the middle-of-the-night frozen calls when buildings are burning down beyond repair, or whatever the case is, but the bottom line for me is that I hope I've left enough of things to move forward with the city to make it even better than what it already is. I'm leaving you a great staff, some of whom are sitting back here right now, who will move forward with that. And being the kind of person I am, unfortunately, I'm not really running away, running away. I will be back on a part-time basis to work through some more issues and help the new staff in transition. But I appreciate the opportunity I've had to serve the citizens. I appreciate you as a council, because we tackled some pretty tough stuff, and we've taken some beatings out there. I've made friends, I've made enemies. You know, if I made everybody happy, then I didn't do something right, but at the end of the day, my mantra's always been, "We're making it a better place to live, work, and play." I hope we did that. And again, I appreciate all of you for your help and your support. And Dave, thanks, buddy. You made me feel like I should do something important, so I am leaving. By the way, I'm getting my sense of humor back, which is a scary thing, so, thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Jay, well appreciated.
Item six, an application to consider a Class CK liquor license for RCJC LLC, doing business as Stocks &amp; Bonds, located at 8528 Park Drive.
Public hearing agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please.
Michael Polk, 2712 South 87th Avenue, here with Randall Scharf, who's the owner of RCJC, and to answer any questions, this is the old Brewskis' location on 84th and Park Drive.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Palermo.
Moved to approve.
Moving to second to approve item six, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item seven, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Scout Dry Goods &amp; Trade Inc., doing business as Scout Dry Goods &amp; Trade, located at 5018 Underwood Avenue, Suite 102.
Public hearing agenda item number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Kelly Newell, I'm with Scout Dry Goods &amp; Trade, I'm the owner.
Thank you, and you just had to answer any questions we may have.
Yes.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Kelly, tell us a little bit more about the business and what you're doing with the liquor license.
Okay, so Scout opened in 2008. We've been in the Dundee neighborhood for the last 10 years as a buy, sell, trade clothing consignment store. And the idea with this liquor license is to just have prepackaged beer and wine for special events only.
Okay, so only when you're having special events in the evenings, or something like that?
Sure.
Yeah.
It's very simple, it's wine and sip, you know, shopping type of events like this.
Uh-huh, and some regulation of ages, I suppose, at that point, or how do you do that?
Absolutely. There's, our primary market is women aged 25 to 34, and I would be on staff working any of those events until we get a manager that is, would take over that role.
Okay. I'm pretty familiar with the store, and I appreciate the move across the street you did, and how well it's doing, and my girls love to go there, too, and shop there as well. So is it kind of in the back area, or where would you be doing that?
No, the back area is, we recently had an event called Babe Camp Fashion Market, that was in the back area behind the building, but what I'm picturing for going forward would be just in-store, and then we'd obviously, you know, maintain any regulations that need to be done as far as who can enter during these special events, that type of thing. We do close at 7:00 PM, so with Pitch and Kith &amp; Ken and several other businesses in the neighborhood that do sell alcohol, it's just a great way to maximize our hours in the space that we have.
Okay, so mostly after normal hours, is what you're thinking?
Correct.
Great. Well, supportive of what you're doing, and how well the business is going, and a motion to approve.
Moving to second to approve item seven, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, a request from Rita Park LLC, doing business as Modern Love, to change locations from 1319 South 50th Street to 3157 Farnham Street, Suite 7113. Modern Love has a Class C liquor license.
Public hearing agenda item number eight is today. Proponents, please.
My name's James Wamsley, I'm co-owner of Modern Love, and like she said, we're moving to Midtown Crossing.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Moving to approve.
Moving to second to approve item eight, there are no lights. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Item nine, a request to appoint Amy M. Carson as manager of Gray Clothing LLC, doing business as Gray, to their Class I liquor license, located at 1150 Sterling Ridge Drive, Suite 101 and 102.
Public hearing agenda item number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Amy Carson, and I'm co-owner of Gray Clothing, 1150 Sterling Ridge Drive.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving to second to approve item nine, no lights. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Item 10, a request to appoint James T. Conley as manager of PF Chang's China Bistro Inc., doing business as PF Chang's China Bistro, to their Class I liquor license, located at 10150 California Street.
Public hearing agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
I'm James Conley, assistant operating partner of PF Chang's, looking to become the liquor license holder.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving to second to approve item 10, no lights. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 11, an application to consider a special designated license for YFC Inc., doing business as Maha Music Festival, foreign outdoor music festival at Stetson Park, located at 2285 South 67th Street, on August 17, from 5:00 PM to midnight, and August 18, from 11:30 AM to midnight, with music until midnight each night.
Public hearing agenda item number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Lauren Martin, executive director of the Maha Music Festival.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, welcome back. So two days this year, right?
It's our 10th anniversary.
Great. I was online looking at your lineup this year, and it seems like you don't have any drop-off in talent between the two days, so quite impressive feat that you've tackled. You're also with Big Omaha this year? Will they still be down at the Omaha Design Center?
It will be. Yeah, the conference will take place at the Design Center.
So that's the 16th and 17th, and then the event out at Exorham Village, is that the 17th and 18th?
We mixed it up a little bit. We're gonna have an opening party at Kineco on the 16th, the conference will take place the 17th, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and then the festival will occur 5:00 PM to midnight and noon to midnight on Saturday.
So tell people how they can go about getting tickets.
Thank you. Tickets are currently available at mahamusicfestival.com. We really, as I mentioned, being our 10th year anniversary, which we're so grateful to be at, thanks to support from our community, including all of you, recognize that we can be a bigger platform for engagement and appeal in the community, and so that's what brought forth the, bringing Big Omaha, for example, into our umbrella, where we feel we can now be the hook with the music, and then hopefully change perceptions or encourage what's possible here through the conference. Two days of music now, so no shortage of entertainment, I suppose.
Excellent. So I was saying earlier, I think that I, some years there aren't any complaints, so I just have to say, we probably average one person who lets me know that the base bothers her, but, but I don't think that, you know, with one complaint, with the thousands and thousands of people who are there, and thousands who live around there, that that's something that, that is going to be addressed in a way that would satisfy that person, but I think you have a great event, and would move to approve.
Moving to second to approve item 11, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 11, 12, and 13 were held on June 19, 2018. Moving to second to approve the consent agenda, ordinances, no further lights. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 12 and 13 are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 14 through 28 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving to sec, I'm sorry, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Supportive of all these items, and we talked about them in pre-council, but just wanted to have a short conversation with Mr. Stube on two items important to my district that I'm getting asked about almost every day, which are items number 14 and 17. So the first one, item number 14, is the approval for the smart technology to occur with traffic lights through 69th and Dodge through, I believe it's 93rd, where we oftentimes have traffic challenges in the mornings and in particularly rush hours, and my understanding is that'll be likely installed yet this year. Is that the plan?
Bob Stube probably works, that's correct. We're hoping that the contractor can get that work done this year.
And that should allow your staff to allow, allow traffic to move much more expeditiously through those intersections, right?
Yeah, essentially what it is, it's the technology that allows for essentially the timing of the signals to be done almost, I don't want to say instantaneously, but essentially within minutes, versus how it's done now, where you actually have to take traffic counts and things like that, and program different timing patterns. This is essentially has sensors located at all the intersections to allow for that to take place on a pretty rapid basis.
And in that respect, also increase safety as well, right?
Absolutely. It's-
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 11, 12, and 13 were held on June 19, 2018. Moving seconded to approve the consent agenda ordinances. No further lights roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 11, 12, and 13 were held on June 19, 2018. Moving seconded to approve the consent agenda ordinances. No further lights roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 12 and 13 are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 14 through 28 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded, I'm sorry, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Supportive of all these items, and we talked about them in pre-council, but just wanted to have a short conversation with Mr. Stube on two items important to my district that I'm getting asked about almost every day, which are items number 14 and 17. So the first one, item number 14, is the approval for the smart technology to occur with traffic lights through 69th and Dodge through, I believe it's 93rd, where we oftentimes have traffic challenges in the mornings and in particular rush hours. And my understanding is that'll be likely installed yet this year. Is that the plan?
Bob Stube, Public Works, that's correct. We're hoping that the contractor can get that work done this year.
And that should allow your staff to allow traffic to move much more expeditiously through those intersections, right?
Yeah, essentially what it is, it's the technology that allows for essentially the timing of the signals to be done almost, I don't want to say instantaneously, but essentially within minutes versus how it's done now where you actually have to take traffic counts and things like that and program different timing patterns. This is essentially has sensors located at all the intersections to allow for that to take place on a pretty rapid basis.
And in that respect, also increase safety as well, right?
Absolutely. It's reduced congestion, travel time, and obviously all of that translates into improved safety.
Thank you. That'll be a welcome addition. And on number 17, which is the next batch of street resurfacing throughout the city, about $6.5 million worth of projects, two of them in my immediate area are the Underwood Avenue from 51st to J. George Boulevard, and then also the Happy Hollow Boulevard, Dodge Street to Western Ave, both of which are in complete failure at the moment. So by approving this today, we're confident these will get done yet this year and we think in August beginning, right?
Yeah, because essentially what you're doing is you're concurring with the bid letting that took place by the state. And yes, we're hopeful that the work can get accomplished this year. In fact, there should be some preliminary work that will take place from the standpoint ADA ramps that will take place ahead of this particular effort by Western Engineering.
I thought I saw some cones out there, which would be welcome, and I saw lots of cones in South Omaha today. So we welcome some of that in this area as well. Motion approved, or has been motioned and approved, I think?
Yeah.
So I'll turn my light off and vote yes.
Okay. There are no further lights. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda on our resolutions. No further lights roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items numbers 11, 12, and 13 were held on June 19, 2018. Moving seconded to approve the consent agenda ordinances. No further lights roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Motion passed.
Meeting is adjourned at 2:43.